Hello. Hello. Ready.
We are not doing an icebreaker, are we?
No, we're not.
Well, I mean, the agenda says icebreaker.
Yes, yes.
We all know who we are. We don't need to be.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 22, 2025 Special Meeting Study Session. It is currently 2:32. Ms. Tucker, can you do a roll call?
Thank you. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President, Mr. Kyle Clayton, Governing Board Vice President, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, Governing Board Members, Ms. Jenny Abbott Bayarty, Ms. Tamilia Gosa Chapa, and Mr. Bill Adams.
Thank you. Next, we can I have an adoption of the July 2022, 2025 Special Meeting Agenda? All second, all those in favor? Aye. And the adoption passes. Next, we would welcome Jennifer McLennan from the Trust to go over Communication Protocols, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hightower.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, President of the Governing Board. I so appreciate you coming to this work-study session and going over Communications Protocols. And the main reason is because I'm new to this team. So I don't want to guess, and I really want to have clarity on what is it that you expect from me and from our Cabinet team in the way that we communicate. As I started with this team, I did ask Ms. Shannon Tucker, do we have some operations, communications, protocols? She said, yes, but the team has also shifted, the governance team has shifted. So I said, well, I'm new, and typically, I really like to have that clarity, so I don't have any missteps. And there are so many situations that happen in a school district. So I work with our Governing Board President in deciding who should facilitate it. And now that our Governing Board has moved to the Trust policies, it seemed only fitting to ask the Trust if they could facilitate the session. And as you know, Ms. Jennifer McLennan is an attorney, but now she's a Model Policy Manager as well. We are going to focus just on the Communications Protocols. However, you receive the document, and if you see things that are important for you to bring up and discuss, please do so. Yesterday, for example, I had a call from one of our team members saying that there was an administrative leave. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I knew exactly how to communicate with my previous Governing Board on those types of situations. So we need to come to clarity on those types of situations as well. But with that, we'll just take five minutes to do a little icebreaker. I do appreciate both folks that have birthdays in July being here. So we had a birthday last week, and we have a birthday this week. So in your birthday week, you've already attended one meeting last night with the Washington Education Foundation Board. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I really, really appreciate you. So with that, five minutes, you have some cards getting to know each other a little bit better. At the foundation meeting last night, they also had an icebreaker. I was so excited. I'm like, I love educators and their team builders and their icebreakers felt right at home. So you have these cards, so with a partner and in pairs, if you can look at these cards, if that's okay, moving on to the agenda, if you can look at these cards, choose one and then discuss, just getting to know a little bit more in just five minutes. And then we'll get back to the mission and vision, Ms. Tucker. So five minutes on the clock.
Hello.
Yes.
You want to choose a card to share?
I want to play with you, Bill. All right. Yes, I do.
Talk about your favorite foods growing up. Ice cream and potato chips. And I'm still love it.
I don't know. It was like a shared story of a family member. So I would say when I...
My family... My grandma and I were close, and she passed away right before I met Mary Ann, or thirty years ago, my dad's mom.
And we... I wanted to tell her that.
How fun.
And we went out to dinner and see Grandma. Of course, I probably won't tell her.
My mommy and the three of us girls would go. Back, my dad would have baked an unbelievable breakfast, bacon, eggs, chills and things like that. And we all said, um... Whenever it smelled bacon and things like that, I just think of... I'm just sitting down in the pot, just, you know, really just settling down for the...
Share a story of a special food that was never missing from the family.
Talking about what had happened previously and something like that.
Yeah. Because if it wasn't there, I was probably going to throw up.
So I didn't choose that one, but my grandmother used to hold separate ones for the five grandkids. And she would always...
Homemade, is it like...
It's southern. My mother's from Mississippi.
Right?
The one that I selected was share a story of a family member who influences.
All right, next one. What comes to mind when you think of your identity?
I love that card.
Do you like that one? I think I kind of took it.
Definitely, definitely.
I think of a Molotov cocktail.
Is your identity?
What comes to my mind when I think of my identity?
Oh, really? Tell me more.
I think of a Molotov cocktail. Because I think people are really scared to really engage with them. But I think that's something that people actually are willing to admit. And I feel like you're... Like people like... They realize that, like, I am...
Thank you.
And I push it up and I'm not about it, I don't think, but in ways that people don't really understand.
No, I mean, you can wrap up, you can wrap up your thoughts and your conversation, so...
I have a game that I played that got me... I don't think so. Maybe. I used to play, um, you know...
She feels committed to go through all the cards.
What's happened? Are you talking about me?
All the different personalities, right? Yes.
And then the next one?
Thank you so much for indulging me in having this icebreaker team builder. I appreciate you.
Do you want anyone to share out, Dr. Hightower?
Anyone would like to share out, bring voice to, to what you share with each other?
I had, what game did you play as a child that they don't play anymore?
Jacks.
Oh, dexterity, yep.
It was one of my favorite ones, too. And if we didn't have jacks, rocks, right? You use the rocks, too. Yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate that so...
Dr. Stewart and I discovered in our home families, families of origin, that his family required chores. My mother stayed at home and did not, but we both had parents that worked, showed us work ethic through their examples. Is that accurate? Pretty accurate?
That's pretty heavy. I was just talking about being a Democrat, that's all.
I share the same story about my dad's work ethic and how he influenced me, too. So how interesting.
Well, I want to thank you all for inviting me to be here with you today. It's really special for me to see all of you again, most of everyone in the room I've known for many years. So it's really nice for me to be back in this capacity. We, as Dr. Hightower indicated, she's asked for a study session to review the Board's Communication Protocol. There's nothing on your agenda to adopt anything today. We just really want to allow the Board members and Dr. Hightower to collaborate on how you want to receive information, how you want to give information, what, what you want, what your expectations are. And so, as she mentioned, within the body of the document that she and Ms. Tucker and I worked on together, we have a Communications Protocol, and we're just kind of following that format. I do also want to congratulate you as a Board for moving forward in the student outcomes-focused governance. I have a little bit of experience with that with another elementary school district's Board. And I want to mention that I know that you've adopted recently the risk retention trust model policies. Thank you for your confidence in that. We are, we are here to help you coordinate your, coordinate your governance model with your new policies. So as you look to adopt and refine the model policies that you've adopted, we can, we can assist you in doing that to make sure that you meet your governance goals, to be student-focused.
I see that, Jennifer, that goal would be...
The working agreements, the protocols would be adopted at a later meeting. So whenever you have a new team member, you can say, these are our protocols, right? This is how we operate.
So that's our purpose today, is to go over the Communications Protocols. And so we're going to kind of go through what you have existing, and then I would really like to hear from the Board members and the members of the Superintendent's Cabinet Team and the Superintendent about what you would like to see that might be different, if you're fine with that. We'll kind of go through those methodologies first and foremost. So as Dr. Hightower said, you know, she has an employee that has to be on leave. What, what should you know? What, what would you typically be told? What amount of information are you expecting? The first Communication Protocol that is already established is the Superintendent Weekly Update, which is written email communication to update the Governing Board on key issues. My added input to this protocol that you already have in place is to make sure that you all understand that those communications are subject to public records requests. And so I want to make sure that you all are aware of that. And portions of those, if it was subject to a public records request, would be able to be redacted. So for instance, if Dr. Hightower is talking to you about a student issue, that wouldn't have to be disclosed. But any feedback on those, on those?
Jennifer, from my perspective and my understanding was that...
From my understanding is that in the past, Cabinet members would draft a report that the Superintendent would put together and would send to the Governing Board. And I wanted the feedback from the Governing Board, does that work? I shared with our President and now with our whole governance team that I've done it different ways. I've done it, I've done the weekly updates aligned to my evaluation. I've done the weekly updates aligned to the priority goals. And right now, I'm just updating them in the last few weeks just on what's been going on. So I do need to hear from, from the governance team on what works for you. Do those reports from Cabinet Team members work better than just updates and highlights of the week? So up for discussion.
Yeah, so this is our opportunity to kind of refine that weekly update. I know one thing that was added that I noticed was missing was the suspension update. So, and I believe that's part of state law that we're provided that on a weekly basis or monthly. I don't know what the timeframe is, but we hadn't been getting it. So I would like to at least see those type of things on a week, in, in that weekly update.
Yes, as soon as we have the students back. What else?
Thank you. I have found the, and I'd love to hear from Cabinet about their perception of this as well, but I have found those weekly updates to be somewhat overwhelming, and I imagine that they were taking a great deal of time that might be better used elsewhere in the giant world of things that they are in charge of. So while certainly we want to be aware of what's happening and we have to breast of big things, it did feel like a weekly email where each one of you were putting together a report, often with quite a bit of data, wasn't, wasn't really giving us the true information that we needed. I, I really would, and to be honest, it felt a little bit editorialized as well sometimes, like, here's the perspective we want, we want you to have, and here's, and I just, I imagine it was taking a ton of time. So for me, it was not, not to negate any of the work that you did, and thank you for doing that work, but it wasn't truly getting to the heart of what I felt like needed to be communicated to the Board, and I felt like it was taking up a lot of time. So I don't know if other people felt that way.
So I would echo what Lindsay said, and I've, I don't want it to be busy work. I also want us to know what's going on, but it's kind of hard because I don't know what it is we need to know. I guess that's where we would trust, you would, you all hopefully have a good idea of what we need to know. Does that make sense? I don't want it just to be like stuff that's just blurted out for, that has nothing to do with, I guess, the, the vision and values of the, of the Board and what we've been talking about and things we need to know. I don't know how to incorporate the questions that Board members have, if there's a way to incorporate that into the weekly update instead of just another email. And again, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not sure if there's a way to do that so that the weekly update is a reflection of what it is that we really need to know. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
So that's, that's an important point that I think is already a part of your Communications Protocol, which is that if, I'm assuming that if one Board member asks Dr. Hightower a question and Dr. Hightower's response is going to go to the entirety of the Board. Is that how it's operated in Washington? Okay. And all of cabinets? So that's something you all would want to see continue, correct?
I think so.
Okay.
So that's why I don't know if it's different or if it's separate or if it needs to be, if the update needs to just be from you and not the whole Cabinet information? I don't know.
I think the Board questions would come as the questions come. So the weekly update would be more of like the status of the district that week.
What is it that we need to know? I don't want just information given that we don't need, like what Lindsay was saying. That's, I don't, I really don't know.
Ms. Gosa-Chapa, I know you've got your microphone.
No, I was just waiting. I don't really like microphones. Um, I like the weekly updates because I need time to process. And so like, I don't expect like full, like on reports or anything like that. I'm totally cool with like bullet points really quick, but just so it can help me to like process the information and have time to like actually formulate questions. It is really helpful for me. And also, I do agree with Lindsay and Jenny in the fact that I also want you guys to actually focus on the work that you need to do. And I don't necessarily think typing up a whole report is the most efficient nor effective way to make sure we're doing what we need to do in the district. So however that balance needs to look, I'm totally cool with. I also appreciate, like, if there's something that is urgent that needs to be known, that you guys do reach out to us to give us time to like actually ask questions and give us information. So I'm really flexible in how that needs to look to make sure that you're actually able to do what you need to do, as long as I just have time to process the information and ask the questions I need to.
I also did appreciate like this general staffing update, just to know where we're at. And I also think it was helpful, at the end of the email, there was kind of a weekly schedule, not to know what Dr. Hightower is doing, but to know like, okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to call into the district. She's in a meeting at 11, you know, Cabinet at 1 o'clock on Monday or, and, you know, but that was helpful just to know, like, if I had a question, when I could call and know someone would be available or accessible.
The, over the years, I've seen each Superintendent has their own style. I've seen volumes that would come to you and you go, oh, God, I got to read through this whole thing. I love the dialogue that we're having right now because everybody, we know what we know, and we don't know what we don't know. It's, it's a work in progress. It's a living document, so you could always change it at any given moment. I'm, I'm that simple guy, you know, things that I care about are going to be, the things that I care about are going to be the actual better, better. The, the things that I'm interested are, and I've said this before, and I don't mean it this way, I'm actually protecting the Board, and I use, I use, I use the Isaac example, but it's protecting the district. So it's, so please don't get me wrong on it. You know, we're, we're going to be blindsided by something, so, you know, keeping the engine going, finding that, you know, letting us know of anything that's out there that's, it may not require giving a call right away because a student got in trouble, whatever happened, but it could be, hey, this week, something surfaced and we have our eye on this, and we need it, and we need to be conscious of it. I think as Board members, our responsibilities are policy, the Superintendent, what was the third thing?
Finance, overview.
Finance, okay. So it's only three, correct?
Well, you have, I mean, you have the obligation to protect the district, as you've indicated, to minimize risk. You have the obligation to hire the Superintendent and evaluate her. You have the obligation to oversee the financials and the obligation to develop the policies and curriculum.
Right. So, right. So those are the things that we should be staying on top of at all times. Again, I really appreciate what everybody said. Tamilia, I think you did a really fine job there in regards to like, I don't, you know, send me, send me what you think you need to send us, but for everybody to do a report that's time-consuming, I'm the type of guy that's going to take a look at what pops, and that's what's going to catch my attention, and then I may send it out. So if you wish to continue doing all those reports, God bless you, thank you very much. I'm going to go to the bottom line on each one of them unless I get a phone call. It's, it's a work in progress, so it's find your comfort level.
And I think just looking at like the financial obligation that you said, I think when things come up, like the federal freeze on finances, that weekly update would be helpful to know, like, what is the impact, like, for WESD? That way, we're aware of it and then can reach out and ask questions. But at, you know, because of, as, as of this moment, I don't know what the impact beyond 10 schools, what that would have on WESD. So those kind of things, as they come up in the news, might be helpful to include in that email.
Thank you. So what I hear everyone saying is continue with what I have now, maybe add bulleted points from Cabinet members, but not a dissertation, not a, not a huge report. And then as an evaluation gets developed, we could incorporate that as goals get drafted, I could incorporate that to report back. Would that work?
I would. When we do have our goals finally adopted as a Board, I would like to see updates as those are available, not a whole dissertation, but I would like to know what our progress is before we have our public meeting, because I do think that's important, once again, to be able to process the information and be able to actually formulate questions. That way, when we do have the Board meeting, it can be more cohesive and more coherent and not just like sprung on to you as a Superintendent. That way, you can actually be prepared.
Thank you.
All right. The next is somewhat related, but not exactly the same, so Cabinet Reports. The Cabinet, as I understand, has reported out in the weekly updates, but you also have a section of your Board Agenda that is entitled Cabinet Reports, which are update in the public portion of the Board meeting. My concern, and, and I know that Washington Elementary has changed its practices in some respects on this, is to make sure that you have the Cabinet members providing Ms. Tucker and anyone else who's preparing your agenda with the bullet points of what you're going to be covering, so that the audience and the general public have knowledge of what the Cabinet reports are. These are unusual, not to say that they're wrong, but they are, it's, it's atypical of a district of your size to have this. Typically, districts that are as large as yours will have the Cabinet reporting on specific topics, like just to kind of play off what Mr. Clayton was talking about, having Ms. O'Brien present in a presentation how the federal freeze monies are affecting Washington Elementary. But less typical to have sort of the rundown of current events from each Board member. So what, from each Cabinet member?
I'm going to be honest, I'm not married to this anyway. Like, I think if we're already getting an update, like via email, I think that's sufficient enough unless there is actually something that's like, needs to be presented on. But I honestly think this would be helpful to like, be more effective and efficient with our time to not have on our meetings.
And really, we've done away with that? If I'm not mistaken, we have not done those, and they came out of, my understanding, Mr. Adams, you'd know more than me about this, they sort of came out of when we were in COVID and we needed those updates to come to us. And then it just stayed for a while, but we really haven't been doing those updates because of the concerns about open meeting violation and things like that. So I think this is sort of something of the past that isn't really a part of our culture right now.
Okay.
Until next meeting, when we have two Cabinet Updates. I only added them back when there's permit, pertinent information, so I think in the next meeting, HR is going to just give us a, an update on staffing, so we know as a Board where we're at coming into the school year. And Mr. O'Brien is going to give the update on the federal freeze, so we know where we're at financially going into the school year. So I've only added it back in when there needed to be, when there was a high priority topic or a milepost we need to know about as far as, you know, hiring or where we're at staffing-wise as we start the school year.
Isn't that really semantics, though, right? Like, I mean, you're, you're calling, like, you're calling it a Board Report, but really it's, or a Cabinet Report, but really it's just a, a presentation on whatever the thing is, so...
It's an information discussion item, is what it is.
But removing those like regular Cabinet Reports is, is what we, has already kind of happened, and I think that just needs to be our practice that...
Well, my, my suggestion would be to put it under information discussion. That's where, you know, rather than, that would be my suggestion to you all, but I, I think you all are in agreement that high, high topic, but not a standing item on every agenda.
And I believe they have moved to informational items now, so...
And in the agenda lists exactly what they're going to talk about.
Yes. Now, the federal funding freeze, we don't, we don't have a lot of information. We know the amount of money on each one of those title funds, but we really, we really don't have any information, it's so vague right now, on what the impact is going to be. So that, that will be tough to report back.
Great, so we can scratch, Danny.
Table it? Okay.
So I just have a question. I don't know where this falls, if it is from the, the first part with the Superintendent Weekly Updates, but I know we ran into some problems in the spring where we were not communicated with as Board members about some big decisions that were affecting some schools, and then we were sort of blindsided by them, by, you know, community members, principals, et cetera. So how is, where does that, and Board members, I don't know... I don't know, how, or the cabinet, how we get this information? When there's something that's really going to be a big deal, how do we get that information as board members prior to it being, doing, doing, prior to us, it happening? And we were like, well, gosh, we never heard anything about that, so.
Example, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about the assistant principals from last year, the assistant principal positions at Maryland and Manzanita, for which we had no idea that that was happening until way after the fact. And we just didn't know that was happening until we were approached by different principals who said, oh, well, you, you must know, and, we don't know about it. And, well, if the board members don't know it didn't happen, well, we just didn't know. So that's what I mean. Like, if there's something that's really big, I'm not talking about a specific person, or event, or so forth. But if there's a big change in staffing, for example, like, how are we to know that we need to know that if nobody tells us, you should know this?
I think, I think one of, you know, the mantras of all of your communication should be no surprises, right? There should not be surprises for Dr. Hightower coming into a meeting. There should not be surprises for the board members where you're learning from the public. We do have, as we move forward, discussion of how sort of more emergency-type communication will go. But I think if you look through the materials that we've put up as a part of this, we've got your guardrails talk about, you know, don't address that issue. We do have a variety of materials that start on page four, that are really the rest of the, the item, that go to making sure that things like that don't happen. And we, and I don't know how far we'll get, you know, we have, you all have these guardrails in place, but it might be something that you want to add to your guardrails. Because in my view, that, what you're talking about is a violation of the mantra, no surprises, right? That's what would be problematic as a board member, and similarly for Dr. Hightower. She doesn't want to have, you know, a parent coming to the board meeting, and I'm sure she expects this, and of the principals and the site administrators, they don't, she, they need to be telling their Hightower what's going on on their campuses, and, and she needs to be telling you if, if it would be something that you might hear from somebody else.
In, in that particular example, would it be helpful for human resources to share, like, the staffing ratio? So then, the governing board would know if a school goes under a certain number of students, they will lose some staffing.
Yeah. I, because we were presented the ratios, but we didn't know, or, I'll speak for myself, I didn't understand that, what that meant, or that, we didn't have, I didn't have knowledge of what that threshold was. And so we were told, you know, we're sticking to ratios, and then come to find out what the ratios were, and what that meant, and who it eliminated, was the surprise.
Got it. Thank you.
So, on that note, if I may, so on that note, on that note, we're laypeople. We're not edu, well, one of us is an educator. But for all intents and purposes, you know, we, again, we go back to, we know what we know. So, and, and what Kyle just discussed in regards to the ratios. And then finding out about, you know, finding out about the, the assistant principal situation. There's no way that we're gonna know about stuff like that, unless we get a couple of phone calls. And then it's gonna, well, okay, that's been flagged, you know, so now we need to, so, no surprises. So no surprises, just keep us covered, so we know what we're talking about.
Yes, that makes sense, definitely. And by the way, Ms. Peterson is an award-winning educator.
Who is?
Ms. Peterson.
Ms. Peterson. Through the Arizona Education Foundation, Mr. Adams, if you didn't know, this is very important.
Thank you. Excellent.
It's true.
It's totally true.
It's true.
All right. And thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi, for interjecting, because we want, this is the kind of discussion we wanna have here. We want to come away with something that I think Dr. Hightower can synthesize with Ms. Tucker's help and my review, to present to you as, okay, this is, and, and that is not a part of your guardrails, and I think it should be. The next topic, just kind of going through, again, what is existing in the district, is board reports. Reports during board meetings on current events, you're permitted to do under the open meeting law. You can also receive written detailed communication on a specific subject matter, as long as it's shared with all board members. Have these been going well, both in the public sector, and in the, in terms of what you're getting from the superintendent? Do you wanna see anything different? Certainly, we agree with the, with the same protocol, that if one board member asks the question, all board members are gonna get the answer. And you all are cognizant of your open meeting law obligations, that you're not gonna discuss that communication before you get into the public meeting. But in terms of the board reports, and board, board reporting out, how, how are you feeling?
I think there's a line, right, that talks about maybe activities from the governing board? Ms. Tucker, do you remember what it is?
[inaudible]
Is that, does that cover it?
Defense and acknowledgements. So that, that is what the law allows at the board level in a public meeting. And the reason for that is that you don't have the ability to discuss issues that are not on the agenda. So I think you're fine with what you've got, and what, and when I've ever observed your board meetings, and it's been a while, but when I've observed your board meetings, I've never felt like I needed to jump up and say, hey, you're way out on, you know, way across the line here. I think you all do a good job of knowing what the topics you need to stick to. So I don't see this as an area that needs change, unless you all do.
Just from my knowledge, what would the line that you speak of be?
So I'll give you my favorite example, which, so, we had a governing board meeting that was so large, it had to be moved to the auditorium. And the board president of that school board, it was about the superintendent. It was the controversy, there was controversy about the superintendent. And she spoke in the board reports about the need to keep the superintendent, her trust in that individual. And it wasn't on, that's not on the agenda. And now, it's current event, for sure, it was in the public eye, but it wasn't a topic that, you know, the employment of the superintendent has to be agendized, you have to adopt contracts. So that's an, an example. I think, I think you have to be cautious about using the current event summary to discuss matters that are political in nature. I think you have to be cautious about, to the extent that you can focus on, this is what I saw in our school district in the last two weeks, and this is what I have been taking part in and participating, that's what it's meant for.
So are you suggesting we shouldn't address things that are going on that have been politicized? Because there's a difference between, between things being political and things being politicized. So is what you're suggesting is that we should not have conversation in our current updates with things that are going on?
What I suggest is that if you are going to talk about a current event, bring it down to your district level. So, for instance, if you, I'm just gonna take a hot topic. If you're gonna talk about immigration, which is a nationwide discussion, definitely a current event. If you wanna talk about it as a board member, you could say, I attended, I attended a, an event in Phoenix Union this week, in which they held a open study session for how to know about what your rights are. That would be a way of you identifying that this is of concern for you as a board member, and as a politician, and as a member of the community. But you're bringing it down to what you did, right? Rather than talking specifically about any view that you have on immigration. That's, that's my, that's my suggestion. If you wanna talk about immigration in your schools, and whether there have been ICE raids, or what's going on in your community, I would add it to the agenda. And I don't, and I say this only in the vein of trying to protect you all as board members from being hit with allegations of open meeting law. The more you go outside the bounds of a, what's going on in your district, current events that you've attended, acknowledgements of staff, the more at risk you are.
Okay, so since you brought up immigration, let's have a conversation. And, so are you trying to say that you do not feel like it is, I'm trying to find the proper professional words for this, pertinent, like, are you guiding us to not talk about, like, what's going on in the community, like?
No, I'm, I'm guiding you to tie it back to your community. That's all.
That's an interesting question.
And as, as I said, Ms. Gosechafas, I started, I haven't, when I have been in your board meetings, and when I've listened to your board meetings, I have not found your board reports to be outside the bounds. But I would want you to stay within that, ties to your community.
Are you full? Am I, should I?
All right. So I think, I think we're good on board reports. Chain of command, this is a, chain of command for board communication. The last stop, not the first, will be the board. If an inquiry, complaint, or criticism is not at the appropriate level for communication to the board level, it's gonna be referred to the superintendent. I don't know how this has been operating in your district. This is often, you know, this is often a little bit of a concern for board members, because you all want to be the sounding board for your community. But at the same time, as individual board members, you can't solve anything individually, you can only solve the problems as a board. So, and I, I have seen, in, again, other districts, the dysfunction that occurs when the board member is not communicating to the superintendent the complaints and concerns that they've received, that aren't yet at their level. And then the other cautionary tale that I would give is that if you, if you, as a board member, are getting involved in a complaint as an individual that is researching, trying to figure out what went on, if that complaint comes to you two months down the road, as something you have to decide, you put yourself in jeopardy of having to recuse yourself because of having sort of insider knowledge about the issue. So I do think this is an important protocol to review, and it's not something that has been a part of your standard communication protocol or your guardrails. So I'd like to know how you all feel about that one.
Yeah.
Yes?
So I respond to every email I get. And sometimes, these emails go to all of us. And I have a, it's like a form letter, if you will. And what it states is, I acknowledge your email, and then I explain that it is customary for our board president to respond to these emails. And I thank them for writing. And I just keep, that allows me to acknowledge, it tells, what we've been taught over the many, many years, is that everything goes through the, the board president. So you drive and said, I'm, you know, and I, I'm very confident that our board president or our superintendent, by the way, because I'll mention both, will be responding to your issue. So it's a, it's a soft way to say thank you for writing, but it's not getting me in a bind in regards to anything else that comes our way.
And I just also wanna note, you do have the board-approved guardrails. The board shall not direct day-to-day operations in the district, which is through this topic, but it doesn't talk about complaints will be turned over, so.
So I would just, go ahead, Ms. Peterson.
You, I thought that was, I thought you were putting something in your mouth, but it was the microphone. Cut out the corner of my eye.
I think you might be gonna say it later. Oh, there we go.
So I guess the question I have is, yes, those things need to go to the appropriate person. But how do we, as board members, or as a board as a whole, know that those things are being handled or dealt with? How are those, you know, if an individual comes before the board, sends an email, talks to me personally, and I direct it to the individual that, you know, in cabinet, or superintendent, or principal that's in charge of that, is it appropriate that I would expect some follow-up to know that that has been taken care of, or that that person has been spoken to, and that there's progress on that? Or do I just send it away? That's the part that I have a hard time with, right? Like, then, then, and obviously, I can't, I, it's not my job to be privy to everything, and, but I think that's an issue that maybe we've dealt with, is knowing that those things that come before the board, the superintendent, the cabinet, are, are being followed up on. So what, what does that, that protocol or communication look like back to us?
I think it's reasonable to expect a follow-up if it's come before the board. I think, given to Lindsay's point, that prior, there was, we kinda had to fish for it. But I do think that if it has come across the board, that it, there should be follow-up. I think that's appropriate. I recognize that I don't expect, like, a full express, Excel spreadsheet on, like, every single complaint that happens. But I also think there's another layer that does need to be talked about here that isn't being talked about, is do people feel comfortable? And I think prior, people didn't necessarily feel comfortable going to everyone, or going to certain people. And so while I appreciate this conversation, I think also maybe helping people to understand how to navigate the system. Because, just like we're laypeople, so are our community members, and they don't necessarily know how to navigate the systems, I guess, as well as we do, which is also weird. But I also do think that there needs to be a component of understanding that sometimes people are not gonna feel comfortable going to certain people. And I hope that that does change with the new direction that we're going in as a district. But I hope that that is also recognized when it comes to, like, complaints. Is that what that says? And criticisms and stuff? So, yeah.
By, by me, you just need to be cautious, because we don't know what's gonna come before us. And so while we may be, like I said, with my, where I'm saying, my board president or my superintendent's gonna go ahead and respond, there are things that we can't, we can't hear what the response is, because it may come before us. So 50% of the complaints, we probably could, you know, hey, listen, somebody scratched my car. Well, even that can get you in trouble. There could be certain situations where you, where we can get our, we could hear what the responses are, like, how you responded. But if it gets into personnel, or there's a possible lawsuit, or any of those, that could put us in jeopardy, we need to be very careful.
I can share with you a couple of instances in my experience. One, some governing board members would say that, sometimes they would listen to the concerns, and say, and they would make a comment, like, reach out to the superintendent, and then they changed it, and they said, no, because I don't know if they're going to follow up, maybe they don't feel comfortable. So then they switched it to say, I'm going to have the superintendent call you. And then, then I could report back. I spoke to the person, and the situation was handled, or whatever, but not in detail. So just, situation has been addressed. Go to Ms. Peterson's point, so everyone will receive the communication, that it has been addressed. And then there was another governing board member that would always say, I would love to hear what you have to say, but I'm so scared that it's going to, if it's ever comes to the board table, that it's going to recuse me from making a decision. So that, I mean, those are a couple of experiences that.
I think CC the soup, and I see some, our president. And so, and then Kyle's been fantastic about coming back to us and saying, I've responded to so-and-so. So from my perspective, the system's working.
So the only thing I would say to that is, I know when I was the president, sometimes I felt like, if I, like, like, if I didn't check my emails every 20 seconds, then somebody was responding. I'm like, I thought I was supposed to respond as the president. And of course, I was not so great at some of those things. But I feel like if you respond, Bill, then, and I didn't get a chance to say, hey, thank you for your email, and the president will get in touch with you, then it's like, well, gosh, Bill's always first, and he wins, and he gets in touch with the person before the president has a chance to, if, if that's how that works. But if you respond right away to the person, but we're not all responding to the person saying the same thing you are, I, I feel like, sometimes we're not letting the president be the person who gets to respond. Does that make sense?
Not at all.
Okay.
I just, and respectfully disagree.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna respond.
No, that's fine. I just, I just, I didn't know we were supposed to respond. I never respond unless, unless the president responds first. But I don't know if other board members feel like they just respond. And that's what the communication protocol is. Like, what is the standard?
Personally, personally, I just check my email, and if I see somebody wrote me, I have the minute, I'm gonna respond. But I'm always identifying our president and our superintendent, and then I'm confident they're gonna respond. So.
May I ask a clarifying question? When you respond, do you respond to all? Or do you, never, just to the individual?
The only two people that are on that are CC'd on that are the superintendent and the board president.
Okay, good. So, you know, every, every board member, it's a very good discussion. Every board member does have to, this is a part of, you know, it is both how the team communicates with each other, but there is also that outside layer of how the team communicates with each other. communicates with each other, but there is also that outside layer of how the team communicates with the constituents. Um, I would tell you that what Mr. Adams is doing in terms of not copying you all is correct, but then you're not going to know if the, if, you know, you're not going to know until Kyle, Mr. Clayton, responds to everybody, or until Dr. Hightower does, that the, an issue's been addressed.
Now, I do have a question. Within the protocols of the governing board, was one of the roles of the board chair, board president, to respond to the, to the complaint, that that's why you brought it up?
Yeah, usually it's just the, it's just the one person, because I think what, what has happened in the past is that, and this is when I was president as well, is like, so-and-so would respond, and somebody else would, and I'd be like, but I just went to the bathroom, and I didn't, I mean, I was gone for three minutes away from my email, I didn't have a chance, or I was busy working during the day, and I didn't have a chance to get back yet. And so then it's like, well, who's saying what to which person who's reached out and asked questions? That's why I was under the impression that, um, we, nobody responds except for the president, and then just lets us know that they responded.
The superintendent should have guided you in that.
But, but I didn't know what the, the protocol was before, that that's what it was happening, but maybe we've changed it.
So that's, that's, that's been our culture for many, many years, and you all had some things going on in the last couple of years. So there should have been some guidance.
So I-
Unfortunately, you didn't get it.
I think that, what I'm synthesizing from the conversation is that, um, the, the governance team wants to adhere to the general rule that you're going to refer complaints to the superintendent, that at least one board member wants the ability to communicate back saying either this, you'll hear from either the superintendent or Mr. Clayton, and they will get back to you on the substance of your issue. That all of you feel like Dr. Hightower should be getting back to the entire team as to there's been a resolution with this, or this issue is still pending and next steps are. Um, I, I do want, I do appreciate Dr. Hightowers and the Mr. Clayton's, you, if you are communicating back out to the board, acknowledgement that, and recognition that those communications are subject to public records requests, are subject to being used against you, for lack of a better word. So you don't want to be communicating back about really sensitive issues in writing. So that may be, and so, for instance, if it was, uh, you know, a student issue, uh, some, you know, some type of, you know, concern that the parents were raising, let's just say, a bullying concern, and you all want to communicate back that the, um, that the bullying has been addressed, but you don't want to say in an email, Dr. Hightower doesn't want to say in an email, yes, we are very concerned, the administrative team at that school did not follow our protocol. All of those kinds of admissions, so to speak, would be very problematic in communication. So.
Thank you for that, Mr. Clayton. Did you want to?
Well, I was just wondering, because one thing that came, has come up, is when there's public comment, oftentimes they'll submit, if they have written it down, will submit it in writing, and we, as a board, don't always get it. Um, but then also, um, sometimes when there is public comment, I will say, um, you know, Dr. Hightower, can you please reach out to this person? And what the proto, if we have, if we have it, it hasn't always been followed to where we, A, get the information, whatever their written statement was, we aren't provided with it, and then, again, that same, that loop isn't closed with knowing the person that came up here, used their three minutes, submitted something, that there was a resolution.
Okay. And, and so I think, you know, public comment is another way for the complaints to be registered, right? Um, I, I think that's a big area of the no surprises, making sure that if you're aware that someone's coming to public comment, you tell Dr. Hightower, and similarly, Dr. Hightower tells you, we are aware that this issue is brewing, and we may see individuals speaking about it. Um, and so I, I would encourage you all to do that. But I do think, Mr. Clayton, that's a fair request, that both you get copies of, if there are written, if, you shouldn't allow everybody to approach the dais and start handing stuff out, but they can give it to Ms. Tucker, and she can provide them to you at the, you know, next business day. That would be a reasonable.
And then the follow-up to questions, concerns that they brought up?
Right.
Yes. Um, the other one that has been the culture at Washington Elementary School District is for governing board members to reach out directly to cabinet members. Um, so, and then cabinet members are supposed to share with the superintendent, with Ms. Tucker, what the question was, so then Ms. Tucker and I can put a response, or, or cabinet members can put a response to send to all governing board members. And from my understanding, sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't happen, if people are busy, driving, on roofs, whatever the situation is, where they might answer the question to the one board member, but then it, the information doesn't make it to the other board members, so.
Do you, as a board, want to see something different than that protocol? Go ahead, sorry.
Your predecessor had an open-door policy, and, to where we can reach out to anybody we wish. Um, so it's to your, it's, again, me just talking, it's, it's, I believe it's, you're our employee. You're the CEO. To your discretion, what you wish us to do. If you wish us to go, have all questions go through you, so be it. If it's, I have an open-door policy, but please put it in writing, don't hit them while they're driving, you know, so that there's a paper trail too. You can give us guidelines in regards to what you prefer. That's, again, it's just me talking, so.
Do you want to share?
Yeah. I disagree, um, very respectfully.
It's not her decision to do that?
Of whether or not I can talk to the cabinet members.
My, it's not my decision. I'm saying that superintendent-
And I'm telling you, I disagree with that. And that's no disrespect. Um, I feel like I should be able to reach out, now, obviously, like, I'm not fin, like, I think I'm pretty respectful in the way that I do it. Like, I do say, when you have time, when you have capacity, not while you're on a roof, Danny, or in the middle of an interview, Michael, like, obviously. But, um, as you stated, like, and I do not say this to pull ranks or be disrespectful, but, shh, Dr. Hightower is our employee.
That's what I said.
Okay. I recognize that. So I am not okay with being told how I can communicate with people in the cabinet. I'm not going to be disrespectful about it. That's cool if that's how you feel, but I also feel like if I want to reach out to them, because I do know the way that I process information, and I know that trying to go through three different channels is very inefficient from my perspective, and I am not going to do that if I can just directly reach out to them.
You understand what I'm saying?
Okay, and I'm, and I'm also-
I'm saying it's, it's up to the superintendent on how she wishes us to communicate.
And I'm telling you, I disagree.
And you don't wish her to decide on how she wishes?
And how I communicate with-
No, no, you're missing the point.
Okay. Dumb it down for me.
It's up to the superintendent on how she wishes us to communicate with her staff. So if she says, hey, I have no problem, go ahead and contact everybody, not a problem. I'm just saying that I'm going to respect what the superintendent's going to ask of us.
Okay. So I heard what you said.
Either what?
I understood what you said, and what I'm telling you is I disagree.
With what part?
I feel like, and, and I say this without any kind of disrespect, if I have a question, it does not make sense to me for me to go through Dr. Hightower. That's all I'm saying. I disagree with you.
Okay, so let's, can we put some, um, guardrails around that communication? Because if I understand Ms. Abbott-Biarty, one of the issues, or, I'm sorry, it was Dr. Hightower that mentioned this, that one of the concerns was that the cabinet members might get back to one board member, but the entirety of the information didn't get to the whole board. So one idea that I heard in there was, and I want to be cognizant of, um, the, any communication preferences or checks for how you would want to both give and receive communication, and I don't know all your styles. It may be a part of your processing that you want to talk to somebody on the phone rather than put it in an email. Um, I don't know. So what do you all want to see? Um, and Dr. Hightower, I'm sure clearly one of your board members wants to hear from you about what you want.
Well, for me, I don't get it twisted. I know that I'm, um, your employee, and that has been the culture at Washington Elementary School District, but I do not want a governing board member to have that information and the others not to have it. I mean, that's my biggest concern, that if there was a question, a concern, and a comment that folks from our cabinet team are not able to gather that information and, and get back. And of course, you can also speak up and, um, speak out on, on your thoughts on that. So.
Yeah, I, we haven't heard anything from Cabinet, and I'd love to hear their ideas. I know that because of the procedures that have been in place, there's off, there has been sometimes where there's been a timeliness issue, where, you know, perhaps I've asked a question, or I've called somebody and just said, hey, I want to know this one thing, and then it's like, I'll get that information to you, but then because it has to be processed through them, through Shannon and the superintendent to all of us, um, that information just hasn't come, um, in any sort of timely way. So I do think there, there are, you know, advantages to everything kind of going through your office, um, but also, you know, if I want to pick up the phone and call and ask Danny a budget question, or, you know, I, I do think that we should be able to do that. So anyways, I'd love to hear what Cabinet has to say though.
That's the culture here, I'm coming in.
And I, oh, the, sorry, um, I think the other thing to consider for us as board members is that Dr. Hightower is our employee and Cabinet isn't, and so when we're reaching out to them and asking them questions, then the burden be, is on them to either write, remember what was said and write an email, send it to Dr. Hightower, and then Dr. Hightower says it. But I also get your point. Um, you know, for example, last night, I was setting up MyParentsSquare, which is our communication tool, and it wasn't efficient to email Dr. Hightower and say, you know, the, the calendar is one hour, they were in the wrong time zone, so all of the dates on the calendar were one hour early. And so I did reach out just directly to Pam. So I think there's a balance to it, too, of, if it's, maybe if it's something on the agenda, that your questions go through Dr. Hightower, and she can pass it to the cabinet, they can respond kind of as Bill did with the budget, because then on something we're voting on, everybody has the same information.
Dr. Bailey, I know that you were going to give Cabinet input.
Well, I've had the advantage of actually not working with third superintendent, okay? And previously with Dr. Cook, um, it was, everything went through her, okay? Everything. Cabinet did not talk to, to board members at all, to tell you the truth, unless it went through, um, Dr. Cook. Um, Dr. Stanton, total paradigm shift, and, um, that, um, we were encouraged, actually, to, to talk to board members, to tell you the truth. If there was a question, we were encouraged. Um, often he didn't, um, pick up the phone, he would ask somebody that knew, um, what was happening, if it was financial or, um, HR, that they would be contacting him. Um, I personally like almost a combination of both. I mean, that, that, I feel comfortable, um, talking to, to most of you and have done that. Um, I think under Dr. Cook, it was like more black and white, and, and so I feel more comfortable, um, doing that, just like you said, Mr. Clayton, for you to have to go to Dr. Hightower, but when you know that to go to Pam Horton, the, um, the challenge will be, you will help the whole district, to tell you the truth, um, Parents Square. So, um, I sort of like the combination of both.
May I borrow your microphone? No? No. That's my phone. For, for me, it goes back to the no surprises. The Parents Square example, no, no surprise. My hesitation would be like, I would give information not knowing everything that Dr. Hightower has on her plate, and maybe she had a plan for delivering the information. So I inadvertently jumped the gun and gave information that she was going to give, but maybe she was going to give it in a different way. It was a paradigm shift for me to have board members reach out directly. Past practice had always been, everything runs through the superintendent, um, and let them manage the message. But again, to your point, uh, Madam Vice President, there were times when I had a legit answer ready to go, and it just took a very long time to get processed and released, for lack of a better term, but I, to me, it go, it all falls back on no surprises. If it's, if it's a, uh, not so much in HR, but if it's a pretty straightforward answer and something that I can give, and then give a short synopsis to Dr. Hightower and say, you know, so-and-so asked a question about, I don't, I don't know, some example that I could give that, that wouldn't be a surprise, um, that's one thing, but just for me, it was a little bit different, having, uh, maybe as much access to the board, um, here at Washington.
I'll just kind of piggyback on all of that. I think for me, just clarity of what, what we would like to do. So I've enjoyed the conversations with, um, the board members, especially when it pertains to like a presentation we're going to give, and we've shared that information with you. It's been extremely helpful to have the conversations, so that either we can answer some questions ahead of time that we maybe don't need to then take time in a board meeting to do, or that you've been able to provide us, that I'm going to ask some of these questions, um, which then allows us to be, I feel, much more prepared. So I do appreciate those conversations. I do, though, I, I have concerns sometimes when we've had a conversation, how quickly does that information then get back? So if we send it back to Dr. Hightower, then how soon will an update go? Or do we just send an update immediately to all the board members, what, what that process looks like? So for me, I just, you know, I, I'm fine with either, but just clarity on how we operate, and then if we can all kind of stick to that same protocol.
One, and that brings up kind of one of my concerns, is if a board member is calling you and asking questions so that they don't have to ans, ask them in the meeting, then the rest of us don't know what those questions were, versus, you know, having, filling you in. So that would be my only concern, is that if a, how do we handle if a board member is calling to say, I want, I want to get these questions out of the way so we don't have to answer them in public? There, that one board member then has answers to questions, and we never, it never sees the light of day, and it may prompt me to ask other questions or be enlightened in some way that I wasn't aware of.
And creates an open meeting law risk in that you're having discussion through the conduit of Lori Mora to answer questions about a presentation. So it would still, it's not inappropriate to ask the questions and get your items answered, but if, it, what would be inappropriate is if the, she's the hub of that wheel where all of you are, where she's communicating what each of you think on an issue. That would be the problem, and it creates more risk. Yes?
Just a bit of caution, there have been board members in the past that have bombarded cabinet members with questions upon questions upon questions, taking up much of their time, distracting them from what their jobs are daily. So I don't believe anybody on this board has ever done that, or, in fact, I have, I have a lot of pride, I don't think you ever would. But it's just a cautionary tone, that you got to be careful of their time, be respectful of their time. And, and, and again, all I was suggesting, it, mine was just a suggestion, that it goes through, that it's up to you to decide how you wish to do it. That's all it was, just a recommendation, suggestion.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we want to make sure, I'm hearing frustration on the board level, that they're not getting timely, it, time, the information isn't going out back to them timely, other than the initial, and that at least one cabinet member has indicated that he wouldn't know when it went back to the board. So both, um, I think this is multi-layered. You know, there's the goal of making sure that all the board members have the same information, there's the goal of getting information to the board timely, there's the, um, there's a desire to continue, for the most part, with the culture that's been established, where you do have responsiveness. Um, and then there's the, the concern regarding making sure that you're not oversharing about an item that relates to something that's on an upcoming, upcoming agenda. So I definitely think that with the upcoming agenda items, it would be on Cabinet's part and Dr. Hightower's part to make sure that the information is shared with everyone. shared with everyone. I think Mr. Clayton's point on that is very fair, and is of concern if that's not.
And they bring up the same questions at the board meeting?
Well, you know, whether, whether you bring up the same questions at the board meeting, if you've had your questions answered, is really a choice, right? Sometimes people do, and they'll say, I've asked this question of Cabinet, but I want our public to know the answer. So, and that's fine. You know, it's not a violation of the open meeting law for the Cabinet to answer questions for the board ahead of time. It's also not a violation to bring it up at the meeting and say, this is, I want that answered. And then I think with, you know, so I definitely think there should be some, again, guardrails in place for especially questions and communication between Cabinet and the board on agenda items. That the information's going to be shared with everybody, that it's going to be timely. And then as for other things that might be more specific, let's say it's not an agenda item, but you want to ask and have an understanding from Mr. O'Brien about something specific coming up to an election, right? And it's, you know, might, might be out, but you want to understand something real specific about the tax rates, and you go sit down with him, and you have a conversation with him. Well, maybe the rest of the board isn't as concerned about that, but Danny could report out to Dr. Hightower. I've had the conversation with, let's say, Ms. Peterson, about our tax rates and about the levies this year, and, you know, to the extent that any other board member wants that specific information, they can come meet with me.
And then it comes out later?
Right.
Therefore, timely, what does that mean?
Less than three months.
Fair?
Yes.
I feel like seven, seven to 10 business days.
Yeah.
For reports?
Seven to 10 business days.
That seems long.
I, I'm just, I know, but we're getting closer.
Like, honestly, I'm expected to return all emails within 24 hours.
That was my.
Like, that's, that's my, that's my expectation, that I believe that would be the expectation that we have for most of the educators that work in our, in our, in our system. And so even just, I received this email, I have this information, I'm working on putting it together in a timely way. You know, you can, you'll have it, but I, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to expect some sort of response within a 24 to 40-an-hour period.
How about when you are reaching out via email to Cabinet members copying me, so I have the knowledge and awareness of what the request was? Would that be a good compromise?
Sure, that's good.
Thank you.
That way you know that something is being.
Done, yes.
Turned back to us, right.
Thank you.
So then it's clear that you're, it's, it's an open door policy, as long as you're CC'd?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, that's part of these protocols, right? To have the clarity.
But to copy you on it.
Yes.
So that way, yeah, that way you're in the loop of, just like we've copied Shannon on stuff.
Yes, same, yeah. Thank you.
Does that, does that form of communication work for everyone? Okay.
So if governing, governing board members, so we'll continue the culture of governing board members reaching out directly to Cabinet members, but then they would also copy me and Ms. Tucker with the expectation of timely. There was mention of seven to 10 days, but then there's like, no, like, the expectation should be a lot less time than, and how, like, when we are expected to respond back to our governing board members. So, in a timely manner.
I would, I would add the caveat that there may be occasions when all of you as board members are contacting them by telephone. It may be that you are, you know, and if that is the case, I would encourage the Cabinet members who receive the information to make sure that you are responding, and say to the board member, I'm going to put this in writing in an email, as per our protocol, so that there is, if it's not on the board, if the board member doesn't have the ability at that point in time to write the email and copy Dr. Hightower, that the Cabinet would put it back in an email, copy Dr. Hightower and the board member. Is that a fair ask of Cabinet?
Yeah, and I would encourage it to be, instead of like, calling Danny and asking questions, and then we, putting the burden on him to email Dr. Hightower, that we would do it, and say, I asked Danny these questions, he provided the answers, and, and then send that to Dr. Hightower.
That's certainly a better way to do it, if the board members are willing to agree to that. But if not, I would have the, I would definitely have a basket underneath of, for the Cabinet members to also make sure that they are.
Yeah.
If they, if you receive direct communication from, from a board member, that you're letting the superintendent know, and letting the board member know that you're responding back.
And it would be an effort to keep everyone informed.
Right, right.
Can we take a five-minute bio break?
Yes. Yes.